Okay, hello, I'll now call back to order the regular meeting of Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education for January 8th, 2018. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Nemecus? Mr. Markison?
Here.
Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First up, a brief president's report. Cherish your human connections. That's Joseph Brodsky, a Nobel Prize winning poet. Everything is really centered on the strength of our relationships. Our students have friends, and we're going to learn more tonight about the importance of friendships and adult student relationships on high school and life and success. Parents are critical, but my kids sometimes take my day-to-day support as a given. Dad, you have to say that. Healthy student-staff relationships are key. High school is one of the first times you realize what you're capable of. It's not just a story or a lecture. It's really you. Lake Forest High School's focus on the individual, the experience, a relatively small size, and the large number of classes, activities, and opportunities for our size makes the likelihood of our kids connecting with an adult, really connecting, much more likely. I was always impressed, sometimes shocked, at parent-teacher conferences with how well teachers really, truly knew my kids. My kids will hate me for telling these stories, but I will anyway. My oldest daughter struggled with AP Chem. She was working hard and it wasn't clicking. Her parents' pep talks were failing, and the subject matter was like Klingon for me. Her teacher, Mr. Patel, worked before and after class with her, encouraged her, pushed her, found specific strategies that worked for her and got her through. Our youngest daughter struggled with anxiety and depression, and her AP history teacher, Mr. Van Eyst, encouraged, supported, listened, guided her, made her feel like her thoughts really mattered, and trusted her as an individual, not just deceit. Both just cared, and they connected. And there was a huge carryover effect that we can see now as our kids have gotten older. When they met other challenges, they had learned, because of these relationships, to believe enough in themselves to push through. Developing an "I can do this" base at age 14 isn't automatic, even here. There are lots of teachers, coaches, and staff at LFHS that care enough to connect. Human connection. Adult student relationships are key and happening every day at Lake Forest High School. Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Markison, and we're going to hear more about those teacher-student connections from Dr. Holland and a whole host of other folks here.
Hi, we hope you guys had a good break. So we're just giving some updates. Not too much has happened because we had winter break, of course. From the Stuco perspective, our main focus right now is the winter formal dance, also known as turnabout. It is January 27th, so it's the end of this month, and I'm sure people will start asking after finals and everything is over. Today, the Student Decorating Committee met for the first time. It's something new we decided to add to our school this year because a lot of the schools around us implement a decorating committee, not just for dances, but for other school events, and we wanted to include any student that was interested, so it's open to non-student council members as well, so they can help, you know, help with all the decorations and feel like they can have a say in what they're attending.
And over break, full student council had a Chipotle fundraiser where Chipotle donated some of their proceeds for like a time period for one day to us, which is great, and juniors are having one later in like late winter, early spring for their prom fundraising. Around the school, this is our last week before finals next week, this is our, what is it, third year of finals being at your period instead of like your section, so my period is like fourth period first, not English, so not everyone said they're English, and instead of being two hours or 100 minutes, which I think has been a positive change because students have been able, are now taking the final, in the same class as their teachers in, instead of having like a random proctor, and it's really giving them like more time to connect with the teacher before and during, too.
Some other things that are coming up, talent show auditions are at the end of the month. I know that's a really big thing that the entire community loves to attend and see all the different students participating. Winter sports are also a really big thing right now, you know, basketball and everything is still going on, and I know a lot of open gyms for spring sports, and some seasons start as early as the beginning of February for the spring. And lastly, the Holiday, Madrigal, and Belcanto's acapella groups had their final performances right before the end of the break, and we actually had one over winter break as well.
As our students mentioned, we have final exams next week. They begin on Tuesday. All exam information is posted on our website, including transportation information as well as our schedule for food services. Our faculty and administrators recognize that for some students, this is a very stressful time. If anyone has questions regarding their exams or the number of exams on any given day, please feel free to reach out to teachers to consider the possibilities of alternative scheduling for exams. Also, if parents have questions regarding accommodations for your student, if your student has an IEP or 504 plan, please reach out to case managers. Educational Services has communicated out some lunchtime supports for students to ensure that they are aware of their accommodations and to support them in utilizing them effectively during exams. So there are a lot of supportive efforts taking place right now to make sure our parents know what to expect and our students are ready to go. Additionally, next week, and this week, our, next week, our library has extended hours for students, and we also want to remind families and students, if you open your students' backpack and things are all over the place and they have no idea where their materials are from the semester, we still have executive functioning tutoring and support before and after school for students who can use a boost in getting ready for exams. Part of executive functioning is also supporting students with considering their study habits and getting ready to prepare, so that's still available. We will have puppy cuddling that returns on Wednesday, Wednesday morning, compliments of APT. We're gearing up for that. And we also have, on PLT this week, both Wednesday and Thursday, this week, PLT is Wednesday and Thursday, rather than one day being PLT and the other day faculty collaboration, both of our late starts will be utilized for personalized learning time to connect, create an additional way for students and teachers to prepare for exams. Next week, the parents of incoming freshmen will receive a link to a new webpage off of our website that we're creating with a variety of videos highlighting our course offerings across each department. I'll be doing a welcome video, and we'll have videos that span across each of our departments that will be narrated and led by our instructional directors explaining the course offerings. We decided to go the video route this year because no one liked sitting in an auditorium, listening to multiple PowerPoints, and then being so overwhelmed you forget everything that was stated. This way, students and parents can continue to review, as well as, they can continue to review the videos but also reach out with additional questions. The following week, on January 24th, we will have, we will be hosting an experience called the Scout Experience. This is open to all incoming freshmen and their parents. It's a new event that we're trying out. It will be in the fieldhouse as well as our competition gym. All of our instructional directors, as well as teachers, will be there at departmental tables. All of our clubs, activities, and sports will be represented. It's really going to be a fun night to get everyone ramped up and amped up about coming to the high school. We want to highlight all that we have to offer, as well as allow an opportunity for students and parents to meet different students, different sponsors, as well as our instructional directors that will be supporting their students. We have a lineup of special performances, a schedule of different performances and demos that will happen in our competition gym, and we will also have scheduled facilitated tours throughout the building in relation to our elective spaces. Finally, our boosters will also have a pop-up shop with scout gear on January 24th. So we're excited about it, we're nervous about it, but we're convinced and positive it's going to be a great night and a great experience for everyone involved. On January, Monday, January 29th, in partnership with LEED, we will be hosting Seeing Through the Vapor Meetings that will be held at the Gordon Community Center. We have two presentations that will take place, one's at 10:00 in the morning, the other at 7:00 PM. Everyone knows that we've been having extensive conversations regarding e-cigarettes, jewels, and vaping, and this is an open meeting for parents to come and listen to different myths, facts, and to have their questions answered, as well as engage in a discussion around what's happening at the high school and the best way to support your students. You'll also be able to hear of efforts that we have in place to try to combat these issues. So there's more information on our website regarding all of this information, but as usual, please do not hesitate to reach out with additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, that is part two, and I will, I'd like to invite Ms. McBlain and Mr. Puleo, and I was very glad to see, it looks like you brought some students with you, and they're going to give us an update on the new theater program, the inaugural year of the theater program.
All right, good evening, folks. I'm glad to be here. We thought that we would come today, I'm Joe Puleo, by the way, and this is-
I'm Kelly McBlain.
And we're the new theater department, which is awesome. We were going to have the kids improv with you, but we figured it would take a little bit too much time. But we did want to come today and to talk about how grateful we are for the program and what it's done for the kids and for the school and for extracurricular theater. So I just want to say, I've been around, you guys know I've been here for business and everything else, but I've been here for 25 years, and for 25 years, we have been trying to get a theater department, and it's been really exciting this year to do it. And I think as a teacher, what I cherish most about it is, first of all, we're able to actually give kids the skills they need to increase our shows, our performances, and change some of the work that we can do at the school. But I think what's been really, really neat for me to watch this year, and I didn't realize how much theater, it brings kids together. You know, I have a class that goes from freshmen to seniors, and at first I was nervous because I thought, oh my gosh, I'm going to have basically like eighth graders with seniors. But the kids in theater, the way they work with each other, it's almost like emotional wellness, and to watch them, they actually take the younger kids and sort of bring them in, and just seeing the confidence the kids have developed in themselves based on the program has been sensational. And so we brought kids with, Kelly's going to talk a little bit, so they can talk to you about how much they value this, and we certainly appreciate you supporting this effort and hoping that we can grow it. I did just this week talk with Lake Bluff and the middle school, and we're going to be going over there to show some of the kids some of the stuff we do. So making those connections, too, between the schools is really neat. So thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to do this.
As I said, I'm Kelly McBlain. I've not been at the school as long as Joe. I've been here about 14 years and have been in the history department prior to this, but have been directing the musical since I started. And I was excited about the opportunity to start a theater department because I believe there are so many important life skills that can be gained through theater, skills like collaboration, problem solving, quick thinking, poise, confidence, and while we were able to bring that to the kids who could fit it into their after-school day, we wanted the opportunity to bring that to all of our Lake Forest students. And probably more important to me is what theater does to the individual, as it helps them learn and grow about themselves, and helps us connect to the wider world. I really believe that by the experience of putting yourself into other people's shoes through the theater experience, it helps our students be better prepared to tackle the world's problems in a more compassionate and thoughtful and equitable way. And again, I'm very excited that we can bring that to all our students. We have kids in our class that are your kind of traditional theater student, who you'll find in the theater every day after school, and then kids in our class who are involved in all kinds of different activities and wouldn't be able to be a part of the theater experience without these classes. So I'm very grateful to be a part of this and to have the opportunity to create the program. And so the students decided they're going to talk in age order, I guess. So Lindsay is in my class, and I invited her to come tonight because she's one of those non-traditional theater kids that is involved in lots of other things, specifically soccer. And so without these classes, probably wouldn't have had the opportunity to be involved in theater. So I'll turn it over to Lindsay.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Asmussen, and like she said, I play soccer. There is Theater Fest this weekend, but I can't go because I have a soccer tournament, which is, you know, the usual, but I'm glad because these classes, you know, I can enjoy what it'd be like to be a regular theater student without, you know, missing my soccer practices, because those are really important to me, too. And as soon as I walked into this class, the atmosphere is great. The people were so positive, and they were very, very funny. Being in the class or an environment where I can just be myself and, you know, push myself out of my comfort zone as an actor or as a person helped me start off the year right. Because I'm a freshman, Lake Forest is kind of intimidating, the school's so big, and having seniors like Shiloh and different age groups helps me have a person to like say hi to in the hallways and ask where our class is or anything. It's just comforting, and thanks to this class, you know, it's theater, I have such amazing and fun memories, and I don't know what I'd do if I didn't start off the year with this class. I can't imagine, you know, starting off high school without saying hi to Shiloh in the hallways. It would just be so different, and thanks to theater, I started off high school right.
All right, next is Bruce, or actually Brian, but we call him Bruce-
His real name is Brian.
And he's one of, the rest of these are kind of our traditional theater kids who are in the theater every day, so. And I'll let you introduce everybody else.
So yeah, hi, I'm Brian Kingsley, or as you may know me in the theater community as the Bruce, and I guess I'm the second youngest one here from the pecking order. I'm older than her, don't tell anyone. But anyway, jokes aside, I did want to come here today and talk about just how absolutely phenomenal these theater classes are and how great they are and necessary they are. I'm not going to lie, when I first heard about theater classes, my first instinct was, come on, like, what's the point? I guess I didn't really say, I know, I'm starting off strong. I didn't really understand, but thank goodness, I've never been more wrong in my life about something, and I'm so glad for it. The class I've had the privilege of being in so far has become one of my favorite classes, my favorite group of people, and it is just so great for all the kids I see in there, especially the younger freshmen and sophomores, and the younger basis is just so well-benefited by this, and I just wanted to talk a bit about that. It's just the opportunity to expand your theater knowledge as much as you can, and you don't have to be in all the shows. You don't have to be the best singer, dancer, actor out there. You have that opportunity. The school gives you that opportunity to expand yourself, and I just think that is absolutely phenomenal, and that is, I've seen so much progression in the kids, the freshmen's and sophomore that I've seen. And me, I'm a kid, too. I'm more talking about the freshman. And just seeing, when they came in here, all of them, pretty much all of them seemed shy, they seemed just really young, and it looked like just the theater class has changed them all so much and made them all just so happy to be a part of the school and the theater community. And I guess I'll just close out on the fact that I just feel it has made our entire theater community a million times better than it's been in a long time, and it's really great to see just all the progression that's caused by it. Thank you.
Why did I call you Bruce? You want to hear the story? There was a guy in one of our shows named Ryan, and my name was Brian, so whenever they'd call him up, I'd go up and there'd be confusions, and they said, what name, what name do you want instead? Because he had seen already, so he got to keep his name. So I just said, call me Bruce, because I was pretty close.
Hi, everyone. I'm Elise, and I'm a junior, and I've been in theater like my entire life, so it was nice to see, the school's always been very good about the arts, I think personally, with the music and also the dance aspect of it, but they never really had a theater class, which I thought was interesting, but I'm really glad that you guys decided to put it in this year. And I want to first touch on how it is freshman through senior, and I think it's great that freshmen can create connections with the seniors or the upperclassmen, because the school is definitely intimidating as underclassmen. And then also, a cool aspect of this class is that since it is such a wide range, we have all different levels, so we also, we learn a lot from Mr. Puleo, of course, but we also learn from the different students in the class. And then I also want to touch on how the stereotype that everyone in Lake Forest and the Lake Bluff community has a lot of money, which is not true, and having these acting classes is beneficial because if a kid wants to go into it and they can't afford the acting classes outside of school, then they're able to have backup with the school and get some training. And then if an outside individual watched our class, he or she would experience some weird things. Everyone in our class is pretty weird, to say the least, or as I would rather say, courageously unique, because we don't succumb to the pressures to conform. That's why it's so important to have a place of full support and have a place where you can be yourself, no matter who that self may be. All of us are fully accepting of each other and cherish and encourage what makes us unique. Some of us were timid to begin with, but as soon as they warmed up, we were able to join in the non-junktmental fun. Some classmates grew tremendously and completely came out of their shell. It's amazing what something like this can do to a person's self-esteem. Our class truly became one, and many people I've talked to agree with me when I say, I've never had a class that is more supportive and one I could call family like ours. All of us get along and laugh and have an amazing time with each other, no matter the person. In our class, all social levels and groups disintegrate, all grade levels blow over our heads, and we all contribute to make something beautiful.
Hello, I am the aforementioned Shiloh. I am a senior at Lake Forest High School, and I am a seasoned theater enthusiast, though I may not look it, I am the oldest of this bunch. So I would like to start off, of course, by thanking the board for letting us all come here, as students especially, to come and speak our minds about theater, because one of the most important parts of the theater department is, in my opinion at least, is student expression and a means for students to express their emotions and their feelings through something so non-traditional and ultimately courageous, in my own opinion. I'm personally planning on going into theater, and when I found out there was going to be a theater class at the high school, I was over the moon, because I thought, wow, something I can put on my transcript for professional experience. But nonetheless, when I joined the theater class, I was immediately greeted by about 15 freshmen in my own class, and almost instantly I felt a feeling of maternal love, if you will. If you would call it that. I enjoy taking these freshmen under my wing and being able to guide them and mentor them in the way that I was guided and mentored by so many seniors that came before me and will, they will ultimately become one day, of course. Theater as a whole means a lot to me. It has always been how I've expressed myself as a person. I've been acting since I was 10, dancing since I was six, and singing since I was about three days old. But nonetheless, having a theater class like this and giving everybody in the theater class an opportunity to express themselves and mingle with people that they would not otherwise meet, coming from different walks of life, like sports, and different grades and ages and different personality types and all coming together in one situation where you're all just an amalgam of people having fun, it's an experience that I haven't been able to have in this high school up until now, and I've been here for four years. So I would say that is what makes the theater department so meaningful to me personally. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I just have to put a plug in, because right now, I don't know, we're working on a very, very difficult show called The Amish Project, and if you have a chance, please come and see it. It's pretty intense, and it's a different style of theater, and I think the classes have given us the opportunity to try something more challenging, because it's prepared the kids better for it. So we appreciate all your support in making this happen for the kids, for us, and for the school and the community, so, thank you.
Kids, thank you very, very much for coming.
It's really important for us to boil it down to reality and actually see how, what we do up here matters. You guys are just so poised. I mean, it brings me back to when I was 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. There is no way in the world I could have ever stood up and be so poised and eloquent and articulate like you guys were, so, and funny, yeah. I'm not even funny now.
And maternal.
And maternal, yeah. So thank you. Thank you very much for making it real for us.
Well, the superintendent's report is not over yet. There are a couple less exciting things than what we just experienced, but nonetheless, a financial update. How's that for a tough come down? So Jen and Brittany could not be here, they forwarded an update for this month's budget. As of today, the first and second quarterly state categorical payments related to special education tuition and regular and special education transportation are in voucher status. Keep in mind that this state, that receiving state payments is a two-part process. First, amounts are vouchered, which means they are put in the queue for payment. Once these amounts have been funded by the state comptroller, this triggers the release of the monies as the second step of that process. The outstanding balance of these payments is approximately $180,000 and is consistent with our projections. Further payments under the evidence-based funding plan, formerly known as the general state aid, are being received in a timely manner and remain on schedule. During the month of January, the business office team will complete year-end financial projections, which are a deep dive into all revenue sources and expenditure objects. These financial projections will be continuously updated through June and shared with the Finance and Operations Committee at a future meeting. And there's one other part of the superintendent's report as well. So while this is warming up, I wanted to give the board a view into something that came up in a recent workshop session for us following the triple I conference, which is the conference that is for the school board, the business officials, and also the superintendents in the state, and what came out of that was a conversation in a workshop about key performance indicators. And we are getting ready, as an administration, to come to the board. We are preparing to come to the board with a recommendation for our view of what some key performance indicators would be. Key performance indicators are something that the School Board Association recommends as one of the primary functions of a board, because it sets a strategic direction for expected outcomes. What I wanted to show you is some of our key performance indicators from the past, at least administratively, things that we have focused on as an organization, so you can see the impact. When the organization focuses on something, there is a significant impact. So from 2012 to 2018, I went back as far as we could look, one of the things, so I took in each year, beginning in 2000, year 12, 13, and looked until the current year, and a number of the things entering the district that I observed as the incoming superintendent was an opportunity to increase the number of students that had access to higher levels of math. Based on where kids are coming in, their reasonable progression would put them at very high levels of math. So since 2012, it's a 217% increase. We have 73 students last year in B.C. Calculus, and they're still all getting fives. We have fabulous teachers, we have amazing kids walking in the door as well. Likewise, the number of kids that are in an AP math course period, again, our kids enter. When our eighth graders come to us as ninth graders, we have 20% of our incoming ninth graders are in the top- graders are in the top 5% of the nation in the MAP test in math. So, their progression should be high. Math is a key thing, in my mind, because it is a gatekeeper for the health sciences and also the social sciences, whether it be statistics or calculus. These things wind up being areas of study that our students overwhelmingly will encounter as undergraduate students and also often graduate students. So, a very significant increase, again, there with our AP enrollment in general, a sharp upswing there that you've seen before. And the number of students, students period, in at least one AP class, so these are unique students in these classes, has also risen. This is one of the other areas of growth and capacity where our students are among the best qualified, the most qualified, prepared students as they go off to college, and Dr. Sassen will talk about that in a little while. One of the things that our kids do not suffer from after they leave is any question about whether their high school prepared them. Also, John, we'll talk, John Maher, will talk about the teacher-student connection. That's another area of tremendous strength for our district, so our kids are academically extremely well-prepared, but they're also really connected, far more than typical kids in the nation, to their teachers in caring and meaningful environments. But this is the growth of students that prior to 2012, many of these kids would not have been able to get access to these AP classes. A lot of this was done simply by eliminating prerequisites to get in the class. So, you don't have to have a teacher recommendation, you don't have to have a department chair approval, you don't have to have your mom and dad sign off on it. The kid wants to be in the class, let the kid in the class, and then off it goes. The percentage of kids taking an AP course likewise has gone up, so from about 31% to 44%, it's another sizable increase there. Simultaneous to all that was increasing the level of access that our kids had to the general curriculum, and this is the number of students who were outplaced in the district. That means they are educated outside of our school walls, that was 30 students in 2012, and 16, 17 was 17. There is both an expenditure related to this that has decreased significantly for the district, but more importantly, for students when they are outplaced, when they are separated from the general education peers, what happens is all of their outcomes are negatively influenced. And so, bringing these students back is critically important for their development, and we have focused at the same time on some of these other areas, AP courses and whatnot. We've also focused on how do we educate as many of our students as possible, a growing number of our students possible, in our district. We are now the smallest sending district of the 18 constituent districts of NSSED. When they show a pie chart of students and where they come from at NSSED, we are hard to find on there because our slice is so small. So, there are many good things to talk about here, but these are a few of the key performance indicators of the past six years, I would say. The recommendation that we will bring, which you expect us to do, is what should we be measuring? What are the critical outcomes that we would desire? And these should be long-term things, not a year, not three years, not five years, but things we focus on for many, many years, and there shouldn't be a lot of them. It should be a small, it should be on the fingers of one hand that we should be able to measure these things. And it's critical because wherever we wind up pointing, we'll go and we'll be successful with that, but we have to point in the right direction for things we really care about. So, that's the, some of the critical work of the administration in the coming month or months, bring you some key performance indicators. And that completes the superintendent's report.
Any questions, thoughts on?
I would just encourage you, I mean, this is, this is great, and I know you all have shared this data with us in different forums at other meetings, but also focus on, I don't want to say the bottom 10 or 12%, but this is all top 88, 90% stuff, AP kids. So, I'd like to see a key performance indicator or two that also talks about what we're doing with the kids that aren't proficient, the kids that are struggling socially, emotionally, how do we measure their progress too? Got it? Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? First report? Are you guys together, or you going, Dr. Sassen? You're going, okay. Pat, our post-secondary report. Where do our kids go?
A good evening. So, tonight I'm going to focus on the, through the post-high, post-secondary report, I'm going to focus on three key indicators, you know, looking at this from three, you know, three angles. One, where are students to graduate Lake Forest High School? Where are they going after high school? How are they doing? And how are we doing in preparing them for that next venture that they get into? Start with our sources of data. Two main sources of data for this presentation. Every senior class is given a survey, an exit survey, in May of their senior year. Always been a very good turnout. Last year, the class 17, 2017, had about an 87% response rate. It's almost 400 students. The survey asks questions, prompts around their students' experiences with the counseling department, areas of strength and areas of growth, factors that influence their decisions around post-secondary choices and the resources from the high school and in the community that the students used in going through that process. The second data point is from the National Student Clearinghouse. It's a database that we have access to through our NAVIANCE program. That is long-term data. The most recent dataset we have is for the class of 2011. So, any long-term graduation data that I'll be showing tonight is from the class of 2011. So, where do our students go? Well, in short, 97% of them reported intending to attend a two- or four-year institution after graduating from Lake Forest High School. A growing number there up top is the gap year, 1.1%. I'd be interested in looking in the coming years as that develops. Gap fairs are common on the North Shore and the Western suburbs these days. There's a yearly, if not two yearly gap year fairs, and so that's a, there's growing propensity there. If we look at the type of school they're going to and the location, more than half of them are going to a public institution, and three out of four are going out of state. If we look at the enrollments, the size and the factors that influenced them, we're seeing that 50% of our students are going to institutions that are at 13,000 or greater students. So, students coming from a class of 400, half of them are choosing relatively large institutions. Counselors have reflected to me on that, that number, and they, I've heard them say, "We do try to enter, enter small colleges and the benefits of the small class sizes and the ready access to professors as a selling point for small, for small colleges and as more of a fit to individual students' needs." But we're seeing a continuation of larger schools being a favorite. And in terms of the factors that influence these decisions, the class of 2017, setting, size, and feel. So, ahead of academic reputation, slightly ahead of cost factors. The influence that's most greatly on the rise in the last five years would be cost factor. Counselors would say, seven, eight years ago, it wasn't part of the conversation often with the college process, and now it's certainly a factor in that conversation. Looking at the map, you can see the distribution of students throughout the country. One of the things that this, this is helpful for our college counselor, for our counselors in looking at the distribution, recognizing emerging states that have growing populations of our students, drilling down on what are the interests in those states, utilizing, you know, reaching out to those colleges in those areas and saying, "Come to the high school in the fall to meet with our students," and then utilizing professional development time to do college trips and find a bundle of colleges in a, in a close geographic area so they can get to know those colleges better and increase the depth of knowledge they have in the colleges that our students are increasingly attending. How are they doing when they leave? Again, this is the National Student Clearinghouse, a six-year graduation rate, which is the standard graduation period that colleges and universities utilize to determine college success. You look at the class of 2009, 2010, and 2011, they're all approximately in the 75% range, which means three of four students graduating from Lake Forest High School in those years graduated in a six-year period. Now, Mike and I, Mr. Simic and I, had a conversation about that before break, wondering about whether I myself would have, would have guessed a higher percentage had I been asked that before I saw that dataset. Drill down a little bit closer on the class of 2011 and previous, so if you look at this six-year dataset from the class of 2011, you'll see in 2016, 17, that after six years, yes, about 75% of that class graduated in a six-year period. You can see the orange and the blue bands, however, that's about an 8.2%. A third of the remaining 25% have re-entered, re-enrolled in a university or are still there. So, we know that there are students that are still progressing towards a two- or four-year degree, and associates or bachelors after that six-year period.
Do we know how any of that compares to the other high-performing North suburban districts?
I don't have that right now, but that's certainly something as we look at the national comparison and the local comparisons that we're interested in. How are we doing to prepare them? The, you know, the college counseling curriculum continues to be, in my opinion, a very robust curriculum. Counselors meet with their students from freshman through senior year in small group and individual settings. Counseling seminars comprised of a curriculum that spans freshman through senior year, targeted to the individual and collective needs of the students that are on counselors' caseloads. As the, as our students get older, the meetings become more individual and specific in nature. Our counselors estimate that their junior-year college meetings with individual students and their families, there's about 60 to 65 hours of those meetings that they handle. Again, those meetings are increasingly individual to target each individual student's needs, discuss what the family, the family's needs, and then start a plan towards eventually making decisions at the beginning of their senior year. Parent meetings on an annual basis. Speakers have come in throughout the year. Our FAFSA night is coming up, January 25th, and that'll tie into our college and career readiness indicators that I'll mention in a moment. And then we had over 200 universities come visit our students this fall. Colleges want our students. The career experiences curriculum is growing, continuing to expand. Students take career strand inventories as freshmen and sophomores, gives them some insights into what some of their interests connect to future endeavors. Classes consistently take field trips to go to work sites and different career environments. The Open Doors program this year was highly successful. 60 students participated in that, many tying their career strand inventory results into the field that they, they participated it through Open Doors. We have a career fair coming up on March 20th for the first time that will bring in over, I believe, 55 businesses from the area communities. We've, we've invited area schools, and it's going to be a very well-attended event, also in partnership with Lake County. And then the internships, we have 13 students participating this year, again, tying directly back into their career cluster inventory results. I'll touch quickly on the career and college and career readiness indicators. This was alluded to at last year's post-secondary report. This is the ISB College and Career Readiness indicators. There are indicators that, the more of these indicators that you can check off as a student, the higher success rates you're likely to have post-secondary in either a college or career environment. Our partnership with ECR, ties directly into these career readiness indicators. So, as we're looking at these, and as Mr. Simic alluded to in the superintendent report, we're attempting to increase the number of students that have access to an AP class that are taking an AP exam and getting a three, three-year grader on it. FAFSA completion is a key indicator there, and so our FAFSA completion night would work towards that. We're looking at trying to, you know, senior-year math class. We're trying to continue, counselors are continuing to have conversations with their students about rigorous schedule all four years of high school. From a career standpoint, how can we get our students into different workplace learning experiences? Of course, we're, we're tabulating or having students track their community service hours, and our students are highly involved in extracurricular activities. An example here of the personal scout profile, which is a product of our partnership with ECR. This is an example of a student's personalized scout portrait. A student through NAVIANCE can pull this profile up and look, and you'll see that each of the boxes correspond to one of the college or career readiness indicators. So, the top box is the standardized testing that the student has completed and the scores they got, current and historical coursework and the grades they've received, their attendance throughout their years at the, in the high school, the number of volunteer service hours that they have accrued, any extracurricular activities they've been involved in, and then the career interests that were a product of the career interest inventories they've taken, GPA, and then any industry credentials or career connections that they've made. Lastly, I'll finish with just next steps. I'm very intrigued in, as Mr. Simic alluded to, the success of our students post-secondary, what that first college year is like. Did our, did our graduates after year one feel that they were adequately, adequately prepared academically, and did they feel that they were adequately prepared from a social-emotional standpoint? Acclimating to a large university, meeting new people, rooming possibly with somebody they've never met before, time management, all of those things. So, I'd like to utilize the email database we have for our alums to build a survey and get some feedback on that first-year experience that would better inform our practices of preparing them. And then secondly, continue to build the college and career pathways. I'm also intrigued at utilizing Lake Forest alums that are in the area, that would be willing to come back and provide students better information about possible career pathways. And then lastly, somewhat tangential, Mr. Marcusson's comment about the other 12%. I'm intrigued by that 4% that aren't pursuing two- or four-year institutions after they leave us, whether it be the gap year, the military, or vocational endeavors. I'd really like to make sure that we are adequately preparing them as well as they transition from Lake Forest High School. Questions?
Any questions?
I have one question. Do you want to go first?
No.
Okay. Dr. Sassen, on the personalized scout portrait, is that something the counselors have available now? Is that something?
Yes, but not all, not all, we're populating certain data points there, so students are being asked, say, to voluntarily put in their community service hours. But all of, ECR is working with us to take the data that all of the other academic and the career cluster data, and they are helping us populate them in a user-friendly format.
So, is the hope like in another year, a child can log, a student can log on and pull this up?
They can do that now. Not all areas are visible to them at this point because they haven't been populated with data, but it's accessible by our students.
I just wanted to, oh, I just wanted to say, anecdotally, I mentioned to Dr. Holland, having looked at this report and having a senior and being near the tail end of the application process, that it was really, really handled well, I think, by the administration and by the faculty. There was never a point where I didn't feel we were given information in advance of when we needed it. We were constantly being reached out to and given little bits of information that we could sort of absorb and digest, and I found everyone to be incredibly helpful, incredibly responsive, whether it was a last-minute transcript or a question of something we didn't understand. I particularly sort of informally benchmarking with my friends who have other kids and other I particularly sort of informally benchmarking with my friends who have other kids in other schools in the district, they were surprised at the amount of information that I was able to pass on to them that had been given to me. So kudos to the entire department because it was really, really well-done from my perspective.
Thank you.
I just need to add a point of clarification.
Thank you.
The scout portrait is not accessible right now. We are finalizing with ECR. We've been going through a lot of troubleshooting regarding the funnel of information that's in there to make sure it's accurate, but we are in the final phases of developing a plan for implementation. The suggestion is to pilot it with a grade level, either sophomore year or junior year, and to work out glitches and things like that, but also to teach students how to utilize this in getting a sense of their overall experience at the high school, as well as preparing them, using it to, as a resource for writing college applications, having that information accessible, but also being very intentional about the rollout, not moving too fast, but also thinking about the capacity of the school district to address issues that might come up with, ultimately, by rolling it out with students, making sure that staff or faculty and staff also has, has access to it, and then having parents be, be able to pull up their student information. But part of this requires us to think about how each stakeholder group is going to use this, and making sure that we're providing adequate training regarding the use of the portal as well. So I've been talking with ECR extensively. We actually had a long conversation today, but we are finalizing the data portion. It's a lot of information in one location, and of course, we want to make sure if I'm a student and I'm pulling up my information, the information is accurate. The amazing thing about it is ECR is at the forefront of a lot of the readiness conversations, and ultimately, we want to get to a point where, if I'm a student, I can see where I am in terms of my readiness. And as a school board, you all will be able to look back at all of our students to get a sense of how many of our students are on track and are college and career ready, based on the individual information from each student in the portal. So there's a lot of moving parts and a lot to figure out, but we're planning on a soft rollout within a couple of months, but of course, we want to start small with a pilot group before fully rolling it out. And we're also, we also have to be mindful of the other things we've, we're rolling out, like Schoology and other resources, to make sure we're not confusing everyone with all these new things.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is really important and helpful information. I had two comments. One, as long as we're talking about the PLP, we have our Lake Forest GPA scale that's weighted by courses, and I think it was my kids' experience that, that gave them a little bit of an inflated sense when they started applying to colleges, and, you know, you have to put in your grades and you're going to be on a true GPA, which is on a four-point scale. So I wonder if we might want to put both on the, the PLP to see the Lake Forest GPA, as well as the real-world GPA, which is what colleges are looking at. And then the other thing I want to mention was, and I think you alluded to this about, it's always really surprising to me how many of our students end up going to really huge schools, especially, you know, we're in the Midwest, there's a lot of really wonderful smaller private schools in this area. And, you know, as a parent, it was a frustration for me as well, trying to steer my kids towards those schools, which frankly, because I'm in, I teach all graduate-level students, I feel, tend to get better preparation in a smaller school where there's more actual mentoring. And it's just, it was a, with three kids, it was a great frustration that they weren't more interested in smaller schools, and I feel like it's sort of part of the culture, and I'm not saying it's a culture coming from the counseling department. I think it's part of the culture coming from the student body and all the collegiate sports and so on. And I just wanted to put in another plug for whatever you can do to, and, and I know price is an issue as well, although some of these state schools, especially out-of-state, I know, are not cheap. So whatever you can do to continue to reinforce that message about the quality of education and not so much the size and the setting, I, I would really reinforce that, so thank you.
I'd like to echo some of those sentiments. I just want to express my appreciation for our counselors. I think they do an exceptionally good job at trying to find the just-right school for each kid, and it sounds like sort of a throwaway statement, but I've seen it over and over and over again with student after student and parent after parent, really seeking to try to find that niche school for that particular student. So please pass along that, that encouragement to, to your counseling team. And finally, I'd like to say thank you again for a really distinguished first year of work, Dr. Sassen. You've been a great addition to the high school administrative team, and constantly pleased and impressed to work with you, and, and thrilled to, to have you here with us.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. Again, my name is John Maher. I'm the Assistant Director of Educational Services, going on year number 16 here, so I've been at the school for a while. What we decided to do was through conversations at the beginning of the year, end of last year, beginning of this year, it was decided that we would administer the Gallup Student Poll. Through conversations, we decided to administer for the first time just to primarily our sophomore class. Reason being is we had not done the student poll before. We weren't quite sure what information we were going to gather from it, and we thought a smaller sample size, and maybe a, a sample size that wasn't freshmen or seniors, but somewhere in the middle would have been helpful. Also, through our history classes, our history department was very gracious enough to take up some of their curriculum time to help us administer this poll. The student poll is a 24-question survey, and it measures four different areas. It measures engagement, hope, entrepreneurial aspiration, and career and financial literacy. As I said, the social studies department is the one that administered it. We had 274 sophomores take it, 20 freshmen and 19 juniors who were kind of intermixed in some of those social studies classes. Which one is it? Oh, sorry, I don't have a Mac. There you go. Apologize. There we go. So, wanted to make sure I kind of told you what some of the poll methodology and limitations were. So, the Gallup Student Poll is given to grades five through 12. The overall data is not statistically weighted to reflect the US student population of 10th graders. Since schools needed to opt in to this poll, it is not representative of all national students. They tell us to be sure we use the data cautiously. It can really be used more as strategic information for programming, and then, of course, it does not represent our entire school, primarily since we just gave it to sophomores. This next slide kind of shows you some of the questions that were asked in the different, in the four different areas. The middle score is the differential between what Lake Forest High School and what the US did. And so I'm just going to kind of hit on a couple of these in each area. The top one in engagement, I feel safe in school, was a positive .93 more than US overall. I find the two underneath that, though, even more engaging, especially with our earlier conversations, that adults at this school care about me. We scored .53 more positive than the US overall 10th graders. And also, I have at least one teacher who makes me excited about the future, which was a positive .22 more than the US overall. Under hope, that very top one, again, kind of reflects back on our adults, and, and also having probably a peer mentor within the building. I have a mentor who encourages my development, is a positive .57 more than the US overall. Now, to go down on the bottom of that area, I know I will find a good job in the future. It was minimal, but it was a minus .07 than the US overall, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that later. Entrepreneurial aspiration on the lower left, I'm learning how to start, start my own business, was a positive .51. I thought that was really interesting, but yet on the bottom, I have my own business, .09. So US overall 10th graders was slightly higher than, than Lake Forest as far as having their own business. And then career and financial literacy, have a bank account with money in it, we scored pretty high in that. But the one underneath it I found most interesting of all is that I am involved in at least one activity, club music, sports, volunteering, .78 positive, more than the US overall. So then on this next slide, it kind of shows engagement and hope. So Lake Forest in that top, in the left pie area, had, was 55% engaged. Our 10th graders were 55% engaged, while the US overall was 32%. And then for hope, we were 52% hopeful, while the US was 41%. So some possible takeaway and questions we have. Our students feel safe at school, and the adults in the school have a positive impact on our students. 91% of our students polled strongly agreed that they knew that they would graduate. 55% of our students polled, which were mainly 10th graders, are engaged. In 2017, 32% of 10th graders in the US were engaged. This is a 23% positive difference. And then Gallup has found that student enthusiasm falls as high school gradu, graduation nears. So we pretty much stayed relatively high in our engagement, while the US overall really saw pretty dramatic drops, all the way starting from seventh grade to senior year. The score for students being involved in at least one activity is very high, 88% strongly agreed with this statement. According to Gallup, the, the coalition, the correlation is involvement numbers and engagement numbers are directly linked. So 66% of our students agree and strongly agree that they have a mentor that encourages their development. We scored slightly lower, back to that .07 in regards to our students feeling confident that they will find a good job in the future. A question that we have asked ourselves is, could this be due to differing perceptions or definitions of what is considered to be a good job? 52% of our students polled are considered hopeful. Consequently, 48% are stuck or discouraged. One of the questions that we're going to want to ask ourselves is, what does that mean? What do these numbers mean? Being stuck doesn't necessarily mean you have a bad outlook of the future, it means you're not quite sure about how to find those pathways. And then lastly, of those polled, we scored significantly higher, a positive .51 than the US with the questions about learning how to start and run a business. Can this be directly related to our business electives? Which many of our, since we polled sophomores, many of our freshmen take the business elective their freshman year. So those are some of the numbers that we have. Obviously, the first year, small sample size, that we decided to do this survey, and we are instituting the CSCI starting today for our students and our staff. So one of the things we've talked about is, once we get those numbers back, are there any ways to link those two surveys together? Some of those numbers see any consistencies or inconsistencies? Any questions?
Any questions?
I have one question. I, obviously, none of us wrote the Gallup poll, but I thought it was interesting that there are four categories, where engagement, hope, entrepreneurial aspirations, and then career and financial. Like, I get everything but entrepreneurial. Are we all trying to own our own business? Is that like how you're happy and successful? I mean, I think it's a wonderful thing. I just thought it was an interesting thing to throw at a sophomore in high school that might seem kind of daunting.
Yes, and, and when I first saw that, I, I thought it was pretty interesting, too. I, I think it pretty much, it relates to the hopefulness, it relates to having future aspirations, and that was the best way that I think Gallup was able to try to question, do you have some plans in the future? Do you have, you know, do you want to be your own boss? Do you want to start business? Do you want to jump into the economy? And I think that was, their feeling was, it kind of relates to that hopefulness of future planning and future objectives.
Yeah, I actually spoke with one of the writers of the survey, and Gallup focuses on the difference between American students' level of gumption, if you will, and those of international kids, and this is one of the areas on these entrepreneurial questions, where when you look at some of the PISA scores, which is an international assessment of student achievement, many other nations' scores wind up being superior to those of the United States, and then that winds up being inversely proportional to their level of entrepreneurial spirit. And so it's one of the things they talk about, is, look, American kids continue to lead the world in being interested in figuring out new stuff, of being confident they're going to figure out new stuff, and that's actually a better indicator of, of future success than many of these international standardized tests, in their opinion.
Thanks. I mean, this was interesting stuff, especially the top level. I'm sure you, you guys have dived deeper into this, but how do you want to use this going forward?
I think that's the question, is, is...
Don't know yet.
Well, I think you got to, you, what we've done is we picked apart some numbers. We have some good talking points. And I think also, once we get our CSCI numbers back, which will be, it's a pretty quick turnaround, it's like a month and a half turnaround to get those numbers back, to really kind of sit down and dive into what those two mean, because the CSCI has got some similar things as far as they have a domain called school connectedness. They also talk about relationships. So I, I think trying to find, you know, where is, where are those connections, and then maybe begin to have some talking points. Again, we, we kind of also did sophomores because we feel like it's a class that we don't maybe do as well as far as, we, we do great with freshmen. We, you know, the juniors are all in the college, you know, readiness, and, and they have that stuff going on, but the sophomores are kind of like, they're getting their licenses, they're, they're kind of like this, going through this time of life that can be a little trying. And so it'd be interesting to sit down with, with some groups, some small groups of students, and kind of talk, bring these talking points to them and see what they have to say. No problem. Any other questions? No, thank you.
Okay, committee reports, the Education Committee, Leece?
Yes, we met last on December 12th, and we were meeting, I just remembered, bright and early tomorrow morning is our next meeting, 7:30. And so tomorrow will be the last in our series of three meetings where we're basically running through the different departments and, and curricula to educate ourselves about the scope and sequence of courses. And it's been very, very instructive for the committee members, so I'll just fill you in on a few of the highlights. At our last meeting, we heard from the mathematics department, from world languages, and from the wellness and health and driver's ed department. So Dr. Waller presented for mathematics because he's the interim instructional director, and we learned that 90% of Lake Forest students complete four full years of math, which is, you know, beyond the requirement, only three years are required, and their options were expanded last year with the addition of some single semester courses in senior, for juniors and seniors, which is... courses in senior, for juniors and seniors, which is a nice opportunity to not have to try something for a whole year long, if you wanted to give it a try. And then, our discussion centered on the degree to which students are grouped into different levels. Some of these levels are just microscopically different, and what is the value of that? And then, we also talked about the potential opportunities to expand computer programming and software coding, maybe through collaboration with the business department. Then, we heard from Mr. Moorhead about wellness, health, and driver's ed, and how important these areas of the curriculum are for promoting social and emotional wellness. The freshman curriculum is particularly strong, as is the TA program. There's something like thirty-two students participate as TAs for the freshmen. These would be senior students who participate as TAs, and that's a great leadership experience. And then, the end of that conversation was focused on the driver ed program, which we also discussed in tonight's workshop session for the board. And the committee expressed their views of the importance of the high-quality driver ed compared to the off-campus opportunities, and the goal of maintaining that program strong at Lake Forest. And then, the last presentation on world languages was by Rachel Abel, who's the instructional director. Lake Forest offers courses at many levels, and up to AP level in Latin, Mandarin, Spanish, and French. Eighty percent of Lake Forest students study a foreign language, and about twenty-five percent are estimated to continue through senior year. So, that's pretty admirable, considering it's not even a requirement, per se. There's a big focus on oral proficiency. And we also learned about the state of Illinois began awarding something called a seal of biliteracy for students who continue on through all four years and pass a test of fluency. And this has only been around since 2016, when we had twenty-four students who earned the seal of biliteracy. And we were up to fifty-eight students last year, and expected to be somewhere around seventy students. So, that's a really admirable accomplishment in this global era. So, lots and lots of information that I think is, the committee very much appreciates, filling out our knowledge of the curriculum. And we'll finish it off tomorrow.
Thank you.
Tomorrow's going to be the...
Business department and finance and applied arts.
These deep dives into the curriculum has been very helpful. Thank you, Lise. Thank you, Shayla, for coordinating them. Finance and ops.
We did not meet. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 22nd.
Cool. Policy? I didn't notice any policies. Hasn't been a meeting since last month?
No, we have, policy committee has not met since the last meeting.
Okay, liaison reports, EdRed, Sally, anything to report since last month?
I told Ann Whipple we will say we continue to monitor. The Illinois State Legislature goes back into session on January 30th. The night before that, January 29th, EdRed is having their annual legislative dinner. And a number of the legislators, who are the frequent visitors to EdRed, will be on hand to talk about, I think, what they see coming in the upcoming session. One of the topics I think that they will cover was the House passing the property freeze, property tax freeze on November 9th, which I think most pundits and insiders think is dead on arrival. The only other thing that obviously we are watching, and I think will be the subject of much conversation on the 29th, is the somewhat unexpected federal tax reform legislation, which is now passed. The item of most interest for schools is that what's called state and local taxes, or the SALT deduction, which includes property taxes, has been capped. And because Illinois is one of those states with relatively high property taxes, I think there's going to be a lot of pressure to ensure that both sales taxes and other forms of local tax, including property tax, are not increased. But how that'll play out with respect to the pending legislation in Illinois is to be determined.
APT and foundations, Diana, is there anything there?
Yes. On January 5th, the day we went back to school, APT met, started the year off right. They do these things called chill-out days, which are kind of a evolution from the, some wellness days that we used to do. And the first one was on November 15th, and they had relaxation and meditation during lunch. And Kelsey Stoll, who was a, I think, a Lake Forest High School graduate, or at least her mom was, came from Forever Om Yoga and offered three sessions over the lunch period. And each participant left with a small bottle of essential lavender oil. And they were very relaxed and very happy. So, that was really a fun chill-out day. February 21st is their next one, and it has a circus theme with Nerf battles, balloons, and jugglers. So, that should be a good stress release.
That's one of the most popular ones. You have kids, first period, with balloon hats on their head, and happy as ever.
Good to be a kid at heart, regardless of your age. The other big thing in the APT is the talent show, which was mentioned earlier by our students. It's February 21st to the 24th, additions are happening. And if you are a parent out there in TV land and want to help out, we are looking for volunteers. The last thing was the senior contribution award. They have revised the criteria, and it's going to be online in January 11th, and the deadline is March 15th to get to have a senior contribution award. On the foundation front, Ted and I went to the foundation's holiday party. It was a great brunch. We were well-fedded. They had a very successful foundation month and are gearing up for grant day. And there was no booster meeting or booster brunch party. So, we'll just have to see what's going on in January with the boosters. So, we had the month of December off. So, that is all the fun things.
Ted, anything on NSSCD?
Quite a bit, actually. NSSCD, we're winding up our mission, vision, goal planning. And I'm going to give you some numbers at the end, but I think we're fortunate in that Mr. Simic, Dr. Holland, myself, Suzanne Sands from District 67, we had kind of an outsized say in the process. And it came up in the last meeting, there were concerns that there was kind of a meltdown from districts to the south. And somebody asked, well, how many kids do those districts have? And so, actually, I just ran through a few numbers. Total kids in NSSCD, current average daily enrollment is four hundred and twenty-five. So, basically, equivalent to one of our classes. The amazing thing that, though, the south districts represent three hundred and sixty-four of those, and that's twelve districts. Well, basically, it's just the districts that are Cook County, Northbrook, and actually could do, Northbrook, Northfield, Sunset Ridge, Glenview, Winnetka, basically the Cook County districts. So, basically, there are three hundred and sixty-four students. The north, which is basically us, which is Bannockburn, Deerfield, you know, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, those districts, we have twenty-two total. And then, the difference is, then there's another thirty-nine, and those are from non-member districts. And there are three non-member districts that actually send more kids than Lake Forest does, or Lake Forest High School. So, and I think part of that goes to, and, you know, the fact that we really are pushing inclusiveness, trying to get as many kids as feasible. If their personal situation allows them to be integrated into the high school, it's much better for that student to be in their home district, if it's doable. And I think we've really embraced that. Jenny Sterpen has pushed hard. I know Shayla's pushed hard. And the results kind of speak for themselves. That, like I said, there are three non-member districts that have more than Lake Forest. We have four students. We have many more, but they're being at home, you know, because we always want to do, you know, you hear over and over, the least restrictive environment. And, you know, that is home district. And I've got a letter here from a parent, and I'm not going to read the whole letter, because it's kind of long, but, "Last week, my son Connor became the first ELS student to begin attending academic classes at Sunset Ridge School. Nothing short of monumental. He's long participated in PE and sometimes music, but for academics, this is a first." And, you know, this family, the child is ecstatic, the family is ecstatic, and, you know, it's just, it's incredible when, you know. And the other kids at Sunset Ridge, you know, they knew this child from other classes. And, but, you know, for them, it's like, no big deal, you know, and it's, but that's where this child should be. And it's, apparently, it's working out great. But so, anyway, just, I am still in disbelief, and our family is, you know, with tears. We are so excited and happy. And, I mean, that's just a success story. And that's something that's routine, I would say, here in Lake Forest. This is Sunset Ridge, one of those southern districts. And, but I also think the southern districts, you know, it's just my speculating, but a lot of it is, I think, a lot of people that are near the border of Chicago move just across the border to get their kids, because Chicago doesn't have the resources that any one of the eighteen districts have. So, you know, we're very fortunate, and they do pick up a large caseload, workload, that is the result, I think, of families moving just where they can get, you know, a better outcome for their children. So, anyway, I was saying, the mission, vision goals are almost complete. Like I said, Dr. Holland was on a, you were on the inclusiveness committee, or?
I was on the writing committee, and then...
And then, which is awesome. So, you know, even though we don't have a lot of students, we had a lot of say. I was on the finance committee, and I think I'm getting to be known as Ted, that's my Anything to save you guys a book? And then, you know, Mr. Simic is on a couple of committees also. And it's really, it was a good time to do this mission, vision goals, because the last go-around was 2005. And we just had a situation where, you know, we have a new superintendent. So, it's a good chance to open the books and, you know, kind of review. And, you know, before, you know, the mission statement was kind of like, we teach kids with disabilities. And now, it is so much more, because now, you know, and if you recall, the southern districts were kind of in an uproar when there was talk about teaching all kids. But so much what NSSCD does, does impact all kids, especially when we start bringing them back into their home districts. And I think that's about it. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Mean it, for all your work on that committee. I know it's like a whole other board and a whole other workload for you, so really appreciate it, really do. It's important work. Okay, next.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Yeah, you always tell us when the next meeting is, so we can all go, and we never do. I know. Okay, on to...
Oh, wait, I have one more comment on special ed. I'm doing the polar bear plunge on February 4th, jumping into the Atlantic Ocean again. If anybody wants to help sponsor the Atlantic for special ed, I mean, not special ed, for the polar bear plunge. No. Yeah, it's eighty-eight degrees there. No, this would be off of Rahoboth Beach, Delaware.
Sure what?
And the reason I do that one is because the military got involved when I was based at Dover Air Force Base.
Oh, neat.
And we started a group, and it's now the fifth-largest funder of Special Olympics.
Oh, cool. Okay, action items. First item, approval of an intergovernmental agreement for the transfer of maintenance, transfer and maintenance of student records between Lake Forest High School, Lake Forest School District 67 and Lake Forest High School District 115. This is something we've done in the past. It's just an intergovernmental sharing agreement, so we can transfer and maintain student records as kids go into the high school. So, may I have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the intergovernmental agreement for the transfer and maintenance of student records between Lake Forest School District 67 and Lake Forest High School District 115.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any thoughts, questions, comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
We have, a motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is approval of a settlement agreement, which this board has reviewed for student A pertaining to a special, pertaining to special ed, and that the superintendent is authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the board. May I have a motion to approve this settlement agreement?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the settlement agreement for student A pertaining to special education, and that the superintendent is authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the board.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any thoughts, questions, comments? None? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is our human resources report, which was provided in your packet. May I have a motion to approve the human resources report as presented?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, items? Ted?
Yeah, I had a question, and it pertained to the second one, if I can find that report. It was for, we're approving something that was already done in November.
A salary increase? Mike, you have it pulled up? Do you see something that, is this just something we forgot to do in December, or? Does anybody know?
Yeah, Ted, do you know which part it was that was?
Oh, actually, it was the first one, homebound tutor Timothy Burks, from November 12th through November 29th.
The only reason it's coming now is just the paperwork just came to the district office, so we're processing it through. So, it's a rec of hire. It was just delayed a bit.
We didn't have it for the December meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
I did, hate to...
Another one?
Yeah, the next one, Joseph Lucy, he's went from a 1.0 to a 1.1 FTE. Is he doing overtime, or?
Shayla, you might need to help me with this one, but I believe you took an overload for a teacher that resigned.
We had, and we talked about this previously, we had a teacher that, who resigned, and it was right before the start of the school year started, and we needed to fill it with someone who was certified to teach the same classes. So, rather than posting for that, we had someone internal who could take the overload.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is the consent agenda. I'll remind everybody that any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for November 2017, acknowledgement of the Pedley donation of a ping-pong table, an exercise bike, much appreciated, approval of board member reimbursement for parking at an IASB Joint Annual Conference, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop from December 5th, 2017, minutes of an exec session from December 5th, 2017, and disposal of audio recordings from January 11th, 2016. Motion?
I move...
No, Sally, you...
I move that the Lake Forest Community High I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Oh, wait, any comments, any questions? Anybody want to say anything about it? Nope? Okay.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Markason?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We had two FOIA requests this past month, one from the Illinois Education Association that has been completed, and one from McCarthy, Leonard, and Cammerer that is also completed. So a couple of announcements, next Monday, not next Monday, this coming Monday, January 15th, Martin Luther King Day, there'll be no school. First Semester Finals are January 16th, the next day, 16th through the 18th. Friday, the 19th, is the Teacher Work Day where there's no student attendance. And next month, February 9th, this Monday, that Monday, there'll be another Board of Education meeting right here in the boardroom at the West Campus. So may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School Board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Go Bulldogs.